Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency Meeting of October 25, 2011. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the floral arrangement they always provide for us. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Council Board Member O'Connell.
Here.
Council Board Member Medina.
Here.
Council Board Member Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Salazar.
Here.
Chair Mayor Ruane.
Here. I do see Mark Kirschman, Assistant to Jerry Hill in the audience. Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any announcements this evening unless council members have anything. Presentations. We are going to receive a presentation from Shiyama Clooney, AT&amp;T San Mateo County Government Affairs.
Good evening, Honorable Members of the Council. My name is Shiyama Clooney. I'm with the External Affairs Department at AT&amp;T, and I'm here at your request to answer some of your questions and to provide information on a recent telephone outage. I just want to start by saying that there's still an investigation underway as to the cause of the incident, so I'm not going to comment specifically on that item, but I will give you an account of the events that occurred. There was an ongoing construction project, I think several, underway in the area of AT&amp;T's manhole at the intersection of San Mateo and San Bruno Avenues, and that included a nearby storm drain. When the storm occurred on October the 5th, water flowed into our manhole instead of into the storm drain. The rush of water resulted in 16 feet of water into the manhole, causing damage to five large cables of ours. AT&amp;T immediately brought in work crews, and our first priority was to pump the water out of the manhole. This required several large pumps and several hours to drain. We notified the San Bruno Department of Public Works of the situation at 8:30 a.m., and we wanted to make them aware of what was going on and ask them to assist with stopping and/or redirecting the runoff from the storm drain and to prevent additional water from going into the manhole. The diverted storm drain was plugged and capped at approximately 12 noon, and the water was completely drained by 2:00 p.m. that day, and then we began the process of using high-powered fans to dry out the cables and restore service. Two of the five cables that were impacted were successfully returned to service through this process of drying out the cables. Three cables required AT&amp;T techs to replace sections of the cable, and that resulted in a more extensive repair. That more extensive repair required splicing of the individual lines. AT&amp;T's crews did work around the clock, 24/7, to assess and repair the damage. All but a few lines of service were successfully restored by October the 12th, though most customers did have service restored within five days. There were a few customers that had some service impacts that required additional visits from a technician and additional work on our part. Notification of this service impacting incident was provided to the CPUC and the FCC through a mechanized process that we have as required. We do regret the impact that this service outage has had on our customers, and we are continuing our investigation regarding the incident. Customers who were affected by the outage can contact AT&amp;T, and they will be given credit for their time out of service. So, and now I'm available to you to answer your questions.
Shiyama, are all the lines back now?
They are, all back in service.
And did it, was it a San Bruno-only event, or did it affect other cities in the Peninsula?
The customers that were affected, for the most part, were San Bruno residents, but as I understand it, Millbrae customers were affected as well.
Okay, and are they back in service, too?
They are.
There. So there's no one out of service now that you know?
There is no one, to my knowledge, that is out of service.
Okay. And was the line actually cut? I'm not saying who cut it or if it was, but was it cut? In other words, these lines are usually insulated to prevent, you know, water intrusion, so I'm just curious to see why the water affected it so much.
Well, there was an unusually, first of all, it was an unusual incident. There was a lot of water involved, and so the lines got soaked. They got very wet. Two of the five, as I said, they were not so damaged that splicing was required or additional repair was required beyond drying them with a high-powered fan, but three of them were so soaked and so wet that they did require repair and splicing.
And I think, you know, one of the reasons you're here tonight, of course, is to give us an explanation, but also because I don't think the communications that occurred or, you know, that didn't occur between AT&amp;T and the city were where they should have been. We got lots of calls from citizens complaining, and we're trying to give them up-to-date information, and I don't think that existed, so I certainly hope that's not going to be the case in the future.
And I do regret that that's the sentiment of, it seems, the city council. I will give you all my contact information, and please feel free to avail yourselves of me. I am your contact, your liaison to the company, and if you have any concerns in the future, please feel free to contact me. I feel like the lines of communication have been opened between myself and the city, city staff, as well as yourself, and so I think that's a positive thing we can focus on.
Okay. Any other comments from council members?
Through the chair, real quick, and then my colleague.
Mr. Medina?
And I appreciate the, I appreciate that the communication level now is going to be open and flow, and as the mayor said, that there seemed to be frustration by the residents of San Bruno that I received calls and emails in regards to the responsiveness and trying to get an ETA and an estimate of what was happening and how long. And again, some of these things were affecting those people who are more mature in our community, and neighbors were concerned for their well-being and safety, and that you're going to provide to staff or to us a contact, but I think what it is, it's also to the residents.
Okay.
It's to those people that are on the frontlines that are affected primarily, that we want to make sure have an outlet and some type of an opportunity to go to a neighbor and pick up the phone and get some response that will help them and comfort them. So, I appreciate you going to offer it to us, but it needs to be to our residents. That's where I'm concerned here.
And I'd be happy to take that information back to the company. Do you have any specific suggestions as to how we could be more responsive? Perhaps give more specific information when residents call? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, for example, I mean, we do have San Bruno cable. We certainly, if there's particular contact information, we have a website. If there's a issue that arises, you could certainly alert staff. We can try to put out that information to avenues we have, but just for me to have that contact, so when I'm getting emails or phone calls, really, I want that resident to feel that they can pick up, that they're the customer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And they should be able to feel that they're being serviced and their concerns are being met. And unfortunately, in this particular situation, I don't feel they felt that, at least from what I was told.
Okay. I'm really, I do regret that. Customers can, if there is a situation that causes them to lose service or that impacts service, they can call our 1-800-288-2020 number, and they should be able to get a representative on the line relatively quickly who can address their concerns. And like I said, I will give you my contact information, so that if you receive information from residents in the city, you can contact me.
That might be good and bad for me to have.
Up to you. We'll see what you think.
Any questions or comments? Irene?
Thank you. And I, too, appreciate that you're here and that you're going to give us contact information, but it seems to be, if we have something, we call you. Is there a time that you would alert us and staff before the residents call us and say what the heck's going on, so that we would know what the heck was going on before we, you know, we had to call you? Would you call us first when something happens, or is that not how it works?
My job is to be your liaison to the business and to represent your concern to the business and vice versa. So, you know, if there's something that I think requires your attention, I will certainly give staff a call or whomever you direct me to call, I will certainly do that.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you.
Anything else, Karen?
Mayor. Thank you for being here, but I'm not, I'm not going to pull punches here. This is, this was a major outage, and I followed as staff, tried to accommodate our wishes and our information and trying to dig deeper to see what was going on and how, and trying to assess how long it would be and, you know, how many people were being affected. None of that, none of those estimations were accurate, in my understanding. We're talking October 5th to October 12th. We're, it's a major thing, and with all due respect to you, I would think that we would have some engineer here, someone of more technical expertise that can explain, this is what possibly happened, this is sort of why, you know, this is the evidence we have up to now. It is now October 25th, and you're telling me that it's still under investigation? I mean, is this something, is this an isolated case? Is this something that has been brewing for a while? Is this something that somewhat happens every time it rains? I don't even remember it raining on October 5th. So, with all appreciation of you being here to open communications, there's nothing new.
Um.
I mean, there's, I don't think that there's any new information for our residents to feel better about. This could happen tomorrow.
Yeah.
You know, and we may hear from you a little more, a little better or whatever, but we don't know anything different.
Well, I just, I just want to emphasize that this is a very unusual situation for AT&amp;T, and I also want to emphasize how much we really value our customers and our reputation in the community of San Bruno. So I don't want to minimize, you know, the, the impact that this had on our customers or on you as representatives of the customers, but I also want to make sure that I honor, you know, my role to be, you know, careful and honest and forthcoming with you, and I don't want to give you incorrect information. So, to the extent that I have information, I've provided it to you, and somebody else in the business at AT&amp;T, an engineer or whomever, would have the same amount of information that I have at this point. Unfortunately, this was a significant enough event, and there were enough factors involved that the investigation is taking, you know, a little while, and it does continue to be underway. As soon as there's additional information to be shared, you know, please feel free to contact me, and I'll keep, again, lines of communication open with you, and, and then we'll continue to develop the relationship.
Right. So, for the public, what assurances does AT&amp;T have that they have a better grasp of preventing what happened on October 5th? Do they, I mean, can they, can they make, can you make a statement in that regard?
You know, I started out my presentation by talking about various factors that might have impacted what happened that evening, and so I don't, I think it would be presumptuous for me to say that, you know, I can speak to what AT&amp;T will do or won't do in the future before we know exactly what happened, but I will say that at AT&amp;T, we do everything in our power to make sure that we provide excellent service to our customers. In fact, I emphasize that our, that our crew worked 24/7, that is unusual for them, well into the night and into the early morning every day until this was resolved and every customer was restored. I can tell you that we paid close attention to those customers who, whose service was not restored in five days, and we did give them, to the best of our ability, one-on-one attention, and so I want to make sure that I emphasize that it is really important to us to continue to provide good customer service, and that, again, this was a very unusual occurrence. I think we can probably all agree that this kind of thing doesn't happen typically.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm sorry, but all I'm going to say is, and I do appreciate you being here, I didn't say that, so I want to acknowledge that, and poor you, you had to come down and bear this with this news, and I think you'll find that this, this community, one faced with a unique situation.
Yeah.
We can get through it.
We've had it.
We can, we can pull together. We're a good town. We just need to know what's happening, and news travels fast in this community, so when you get the information to the right folks, it gets out quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Rico?
(inaudible).
Thank you for having me.
Robert Rico, 7000. Two things, your comment that this was unusual, since 2002, we've had bad rainstorms almost every year, once or twice, November, December, where the San Bruno, or San Mateo Avenue has had flooding conditions, which means water's going to go where it shouldn't, potentially into AT&amp;T openings. With the great separation, there's going to be more street openings, there's going to be more storm drains that are limited access or whatever. How is AT&amp;T going to be more proactive and have somebody out here or work with the city to make sure that they can do everything proactively so that next time it rains, for whatever reason, in the next year, we're not going to have the same situation? Thank you.
I appreciate your comment, and I'm sorry, I feel like I'm not providing satisfactory answers, but I can tell you that you wouldn't want me to comment on something and make things up out of whole cloth or, again, be disingenuous.
We'll defend you.
Or speculate. So, I really can't provide any specific information about how we can prevent this from happening again, because as I said, the, the cause is still unknown, and potentially, there were several factors involved. And, but I, I just want to reassure you that, having personally been at AT&amp;T for 12 years and having personally been involved in dealing with this situation internally, that everybody involved had as their first priority restoring every single customer as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item 5, review, review of the agenda. Any changes? Okay. Item 6, approval of the minutes of the City Council Planning Commission Joint Special Meeting of October 11th, 2011, and the City Council Meeting of October 11th, 2011. Changes, errors, submissions? All right, seeing none, they'll stand as, stand approved as mailed, submitted. Item 7, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier or council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no, no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
If there are no items to be pulled, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 8, we do have a public hearing this evening. We're going to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving a request for citizens' option for public safety funds for fiscal year 2011-12 in the amount of $100,000 for traffic enforcement.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. In 1996, Assembly Bill 3229 implemented the citizens' option for public safety or the COPS program. The program appropriated state funds to enhance frontline police services. Part of the requirements for COPS funding is to, a written request from the Chief of Police to identify the frontline needed the law enforcement agency and to hold a public hearing. Since 2001, the department has identified the need for a traffic officer to supplement its law enforcement services to the community, and we have dedicated the COPS funding to that position for the past 10 years. Tonight, I'm making the same recommendation. Traffic enforcement and the related duties are crucial to providing law enforcement services to the community, and the traffic officer position enhances the department's ability to respond to traffic complaints, enforce traffic laws, and investigate traffic collisions. As you'll remember, in 2009, COPS funding was questionable due to uncertainties in the state budget. Last year, COPS funding was received without incident, however, this year, COPS funding was again at risk, and we found out late in the game that COPS funding was going to be instituted. I'm not sure what we're going to experience next year, but I can tell you that that traffic officer is crucial for us to provide police services to this community. The request and recommendation before you tonight will allow COPS funding to continue to be devoted to maintain one traffic officer included in our budget. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of the chief?
Chief, real quick, we had already budgeted this item, and now the grants funds are, there was a concern that they may not be available, but obviously, they are available.
Correct.
So therefore, we'd already budgeted, and now this money will offset that, or not offset it, but am I incorrect?
It's, it's been in there.
You're, you're correct. We budgeted the position. Apparently, according to the Finance Director, we did not budget grant funds, so this, we were, as you may recall, very conservative in our budgeting, and since the availability of the grant was still uncertain at the time of our budget preparation and approval, the grant is not shown in the budget.
Thank you.
All right. This time, we're going to open the public hearing. Any member of the public would like to speak on this item? I'll remind you that if we do, if we do close the public hearing, you'd be precluded from talking about this item again. Do you have any action?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce this resolution for adoption?
Through the chair, I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number 9, public comment, and items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Anyone in the audience like to address the council on public comment?
All right, somebody get up there and talk.
Seeing none, we'll move right on to item 10, conduct of business. Item A is receive a quarterly financial report as of September 30th, 2011, for the city and redevelopment agency fiscal year 2011-12 general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, and then soon Finance Director. I'll preface my presentation by saying that when we did the budget for fiscal year 11-12, we were very conservative, recognizing the fact that the economy was still susceptible to continued weakness, and I think with one quarter of economic data on hand, I think that proves to be true. Unemployment rate is still very high, consumer confidence is still very low, and there's still a possibility even of a recession. So having said that, I'll go into the first quarter results. One of the things that's inherent in terms of the city's revenues and the general fund is the fact that not all the categories are linear, and therefore, it's not necessary that we will see 25% or, you know, three months' worth of revenues in each one of those categories. So, having said that, I'll go over some of the major categories of revenues that we have in the general fund, starting off with property tax. What we see here is a very modest amount of revenues for the first three months. These are really supplemental assessments that we receive from the county. The primary secure property taxes, they come in in the months of December and April of each year, so therefore, we're not really going to be seeing those until the second quarter report that's going to be presented to you in January. In the area of sales tax, again, it's not linear because we're actually getting those receipts from the state board of equalization a month after the fact, so there's about a two months' worth of revenues in sales tax, and that excludes a triple flip calculation, which is the monies that are also remitted through the county as part of property tax payment, so that's why, again, the revenues for the sales tax looks abnormally low in terms of a linear calculation. Similar picture in terms of the motor vehicle license fee, otherwise known as VLF. The in-loop portion of it is also a property tax payment from the county, and therefore, again, very low revenues for this category comparable to what we had in the past year. In the category of charges for services, those are primarily monies that are done internally, internal service fund, internal service calculations to the other departments, and then also general admin allocations to the various funds and departments, so that comes in pretty close to the three-month mark at the 25% level, as you can see. And then, moving on to the next category, use of money and property. Primarily, the sources of revenues there are interest that we earn from our investment portfolio. This is also the equity earnings we get from cable television, and then lastly, we have some rentals. One of the primary rentals that we have is the monies that we get from the cell towers that we have throughout the city. And then lastly, in terms of major categories for the general fund, is the TOT tax. Now, both of these years, the current three months for this fiscal year and then last fiscal year reflect the 12% rate that's in place. That was approved by the voters back in 2009, so it's really a comparable comparison. As you can tell, we continue to see improvement in that area with some growth compared to the prior quarter. Moving on to expenditures, what we see here in aggregate is the fact that we're running around the 24% level, again, similar to the level that we had in the prior year, given the fact that the 11-12 budgets for expenditures, total expenditures actually increased from the prior year. Nothing major there. There's some seasonality in some of the departments, for instance, recreation, there's a little bit more activity during the summer months, so therefore, you see a little bit higher expenditure percentage for, for that particular department.
It's amazing, $4 million for safety.
Moving on to the redevelopment agency, we're all aware of the fact that AB 26-27 is, has been stayed, and we're waiting, just like all the other agencies, redevelopment agencies, for the California Supreme Court to rule on this. These revenues are basically tax increments, and again, similar to property taxes, we don't receive those monies until December and, and April. In terms of expenditures, very modest amount of expenditures. Some of the major expenditure categories in redevelopment doesn't happen until toward the second half of the year. Included in those are the pass-through payments. Obviously, we don't make those pass-through payments until we get the tax increment revenues from the county. Another element that is related to AB 26-27, obviously, is that if, once the Supreme Court rules, if AB 26 and 27 does stay, there is potentially a large sum of payment that would be due from the redevelopment agency for those who've opted in, and, and the city council did opt in a number of months back, so we're really waiting until the Supreme Court rules before making the decision, potentially to amend the budget, if that's necessary for, for that ransom payment, if I may. Looking at enterprise funds, we have the four major funds there, the cable television, enterprise. We're running a little bit behind last year's pace in terms of revenues. Likewise, expenditures is below the 25% mark, if I may. There's obviously some relationship between revenues and expenditures. The more subscribers we have in cable TV, the more costs we incur in terms of programming, and I think we're still struggling a little bit in terms of trying to maintain, continue to maintain our customer base in the era of cable TV, although I think we also gained some customers in terms of telecommunications. In the era of wastewater and water, those revenues include rate adjustments that were put in place as part of the three-year process that was approved by council three years ago, so those revenues are tracking where we are, and expenditures are both at around 21% level. In the area of the stormwater enterprise, those revenues are also assessments that come through the property tax bill, similar to property tax. We haven't gotten any revenues yet because, again, those revenues don't come in until the, the payments that are received in both December and April. With that, I'll take any questions in terms of the quarterly financial update.
Any questions of the Finance Director? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the first quarter budget amendments. The practice of the organization is basically to summarize for the city council actions that were taken by the city council during the prior quarter that have budgetary impacts, so I'm going to basically identify and go through some of those adjustments that were approved by the city council during the course of the quarter. We had thermal imaging cameras that were approved. Majority of this is through FEMA firefighter's grants, and then we also have a local match from four participating agencies for this grant, so a total of five agencies actually participating, including ourselves. participating, including ourselves, and each one is buying one camera. So the city's cost in terms of our match works out to be $2,000 there. Next, we received approval for a wheelchair lift and a security gate for the library. Most of this is paid through a development, community development block grant, and the balance is paid through the state library fund. Moving on to the next item, we have a couple items that involve the equipment replacement fund. The first one is a senior bus. $29,000 of the 129 is paid through the equipment replacement fund. The rest is being paid by a Prop 1B grants that we received. And then next, charge for the equipment replacement fund is the purchase of the fire apparatus. As you may recall, this one is a lease purchase agreement that we entered into, and we're using $344,000 in the equipment replacement fund for a portion of the purchase. The balance is being financed for seven years through a financing company, a bank. Seven years, seven annual payments that needs to be made to fulfill the obligation there. Next, we have a capital improvement project coming out of the water capital fund for roof replacement and holding tank refurbishment for pump number six. Again, that's coming from the enterprise fund. And then the next item is the medical premiums that increase that we incur for the current fiscal year, and the City Council was very generous in authorizing the city manager to use some one-time resources to pay for that. There's, there were some savings from the cancellation of the municipal election for November, and also, we received some monies administrative overhead as part of the reimbursement process for a Glenview fire incident. So the combination of those resources helped fund the additional medical premiums associated with the current year. Then we move to the Crestmore Glenview neighborhood construction. City Council authorized construction Phase 1 of sewer improvements for $175,000, and then also a design for Phase 1 of the water system improvements for $79,000. And then during the course of the three months, we've incurred some expenditures for the Crestmore neighborhood, and they aggregate approximately $314,000. All of these costs have been submitted to one of two resources, one being the Calima Process, the other one is the PG&E Trust. Of those expenditures that we submitted, we received approximately $28,000 in payments during the quarter. And then lastly, in the redevelopment fund, City Council authorized $125,000 for the archway for the great separation. So these are the budget adjustments that took place during the first quarter, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the Finance Director? This is item B, which is adopt a resolution approving first quarter budget amendments to the city and redevelopment agency fiscal year 2011-12 operating a capital improvement program by district. Anyone like to introduce the resolution?
To the Chair, I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Aye.
Councilboard Member O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilboard Member Medina.
Aye.
Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Chair, Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item 10C, adopt a resolution amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of San Bruno and the Public Safety Midmanagement Group to establish compensation for a battalion chief position assigned to a fire prevention position. Chief?
Honorable Mayor, members of the Council, tonight's staff is requesting the Council to adopt that resolution amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of San Bruno and the Public Midmanagement Group to establish compensation for battalion chief position assigned to fire prevention. Due to retirement of the Fire Division Chief in August, staff has recommended replacing that position with a 40-hour administrative battalion chief. The department has a current eligibility list for the position of battalion chief, and eligible candidates on that list will be considered for the appointment. Staff did consider evaluating fire prevention capacity in neighboring jurisdictions, as well as contracting these services to private contractor or third party. In both cases, staff concluded there would not be comparable level of prevention services. Staff believes that having personnel internally and on current eligibility list, we can flatten the organization and still provide a sustainable level of prevention services. Another advantage is we also keep almost $200,000 in revenue through private prevention services and fees. Because the current salary and benefits for the city battalion chief position is based on a 56-hour work week with overtime required, there is a need to establish an appropriate and comparable compensation structure for battalion chief position assigned to the administrative functions, with a 40-hour week schedule and limited eligibility for overtime or other special pay. By assigning the prevention function to a battalion chief position, the city will reduce department costs by over $30,000. The number of authorized personnel in the department will not change. City staff and representatives from the Public Safety Midmanagement Group and the Teamsters met and agreed to a 5% additional pay for the fire battalion chief in the prevention assignment, and a 2% additional pay in lieu of management leave for the same position. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the Chief? Chief Michael.
First of all, let me just say, Chief, that I have nothing but the utmost respect for you and your men, so don't take anything I say the wrong way. It has nothing to do with my opinion, but when I'm looking at this, what it sounds to me like is we're taking a position that's based on 56 hours, we're reducing it to 40 hours, and we're asking to pay more for that position. Does that pretty much summarize it?
What we're doing is we're taking it from a division chief level, we're reducing that position to a battalion chief level, which is a lower-paid position. And what, when we transfer from a 56-hour work week to a 40, the 56-hour has holiday pay, FLSA, and obviously, the overtime piece. To make the transfer to 40-hour and to make it attractive enough for someone to go from operations, and essentially, taking a cut in pay overall, and to make it attractive enough to keep it at a level base where they can make a decent salary and benefit. So that's kind of the transition of how it works. It doesn't sound logical, because it's going from more hours to less hours, but the reality is we have to make it compensable with existing battalion chief on the operational side also.
But we're also, this position would then not require them to be running into burning buildings. It would.
Correct.
Give them a steady nine-to-five job. It would allow them to take their vacation.
Correct.
When they planned it, and spend more time with their families. So there is that benefit and.
That side of it also, yeah. And, you know, we, in the 2% lieu of, it was, you know, we looked at the overtime piece because I will require the fire marshal to come in and do fire investigations off hours. He'll be responsible for conducting those. So that's another piece of, in lieu piece, that made sense.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Action?
To the Chair, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution, amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of San Bruno and the Public Safety Midmanagement Group to establish comprehensive for bat chief assigned to the fire prevention.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
No.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item number 11, report of commissions, boards, and committees. There aren't none this evening. Item 12, comments from council members. I just wanted to tell everyone to have a very safe Halloween. There's lots of young kids out there coming up here, and I want to make sure they get all the candy they have in a safe manner, so. Anything else from council members? Item 13, we do have a closed session, conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code Section 54956, point 9B, one case, and this meeting will adjourn, and there won't be any reportable action coming back. So this meeting will adjourn until the next meeting, November 8th, which is Election Day, so please vote right here, Senior Center.